All right, call this meeting. Go order please to the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. Roll call please. Ice, sir. Savage.
I'm here.
Brochus.
Yes, sir.
Barnhart.
Here.
Uh, there was an executive session held on July 10th for personnel. I have two additions to the agenda, uh, so I make the motion to add the dedication of an unnamed ally and for the disabilities proclamation. Do I have a second? Barnhart.
Yes.
Brochus. Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Ice, sir.
Yes.
All right, is there any public comment at this time on agenda items? Any public comment? Please state your name.
Um, my name's Tracy Lesher. And I just want to say, I'm putting this out there that I totally have 100% confidence in Victoria Rosenkrantz. Being nominated to city council for the next month. Um, she has done so much for the city and certainly deserves the slot. Um, personally, no, she's done a lot for my son and myself too, um, but for this, you're not going to find anybody that does more for the city and loves the city more than she does.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this time on agenda items? Please state your name ma'am.
Debbie Batson. I wasn't going to bring it up, but now that Tracy Lesher did, I do want to bring up the fact that, um, Victoria has been known to have lives in our community, talking about our city council as it is. And I was here for the, well, no, you didn't stop her from saying things. Um, and she was talking about lives all the time and talking about our city council in a negative tone constantly. So I just want to let people know that.
Victoria is from our sister, I mean, excuse me, dad from our sister, you're not allowed to, did you meet anyone during public comment?
Oh, thankful.
Is there any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name ma'am.
I'm Evelyn Mercer, North Bay Street, Sunbury. So I'm going to read all my thoughts. Okay, I'll just take a moment. I returned to Sunbury about nine and a half years ago. In that time, I've, I've watched what happens here in our city, uh, which I love it, my city, my hometown. Uh, I've observed of those who represent us and who are actively involved in our city and those who aren't actively involved. I've observed officials and citizens who promote and attend city events and those who don't attend any events. Uh, those representatives who pursue solutions to the city's issues in a positive manner and those who don't. I've observed those who exhibit a genuine desire to be acting more, move forward and not stay with the status quo. I've observed those who are concerned with and contribute to all the citizens of Sunbury, especially children and seniors. Those who are not biased. My personal story with this person is I live at the corner of Northgate and Line and they closed the, you know, bound for flooding. Well, one time we had a big, um, snowstorm and we paid $40 to have somebody clean it. I went down when everybody's there and they had dumped snow all over my sidewalk. So I posted something on Facebook about this and said, I'm a senior citizen, Sunbury Al, class of 1963. And so I went back downstairs to clean the, um, snow off the walls. I went to find and I ended up, somebody had come by and, and taken care of the whole thing. I was surprised, I was delighted, I was thankful. So that's my story. I didn't know who it was, I had no idea, no, 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 it's nothing. So in saying all this, I have only seen one nominee who has stepped up to the plate and is qualified to represent me in city council. I encourage Mayor Brochus and the city council to choose Victoria Rosenkrantz.
Is there any other public comment at this time on agenda items? Please state your name sir.
My name is Timothy Ring. I'm a homeowner on West Savannah Avenue. And if I were to decide which one would be the city council's seat, I think every one of them would do good, but I think we should all consider one that is active in the city at all times, who would be Victoria. If there's anything to be dug up or found, she would do it. And I think she would best, be the best seat for the city. Thank you.
Any other public comment on agenda items? Please state your name.
Mary Ann Miller. I live at 56 South Street and I also ring and I beg the council to please vote for Victoria. She has done so much for this community. Personally, I know her and she has pride, blood, sweat and tears for this community. So please vote for her.
Any other public comment at this time on agenda items? Please state your name sir.
Um, Thomas Schreit. I own, uh, Schreit Physical Therapy in town here, uh, serve on Parks and Rec with Jamie, um, also here for Victoria. Um, other than those, those positions I hold, uh, I'm here as a special needs dad. My son Attic has autism. It makes a lot of events difficult, you know, that typical kids might be able to do. Some of the events that Victoria has, uh, her connection with the big man in North Pole, you know, saying Mr. Claus, uh, making that a friendly environment for my son to go in and not be overwhelmed by line at the mall. Special needs swim night, uh, taking on physical kids at the pool can be a challenge. They like to get on the slide, eat first, head first speed up, doesn't matter. And when you say don't run, they don't always abide by that. So having that freedom at the pool is great. Special needs Easter egg hunt, long cruise of Easter egg hunt. They benefit my family greatly. So I call it this more as a special needs dad. I am a business owner in the city and I would like to see Victoria get a shot. I know she's highly involved, uh, with everything. So I'd like to see her get a chance, but more so thank her for helping with some of my business while with, uh, my family's work.
Any other public comment at this time on agenda items? Any other comment? Okay, uh, moving on, uh, first to fill the vacancy, uh, vacancy for city council. Obviously, we had interviews prior to this meeting in a work session. So here's our, I guess, our delegation time. So let's start with Councilman Ice, who he believes should fill a position. Let's go right down to John then. Nate?
I think this is the least attractive position to be in as a council person, especially one that was appointed before. And I think that we have five qualified people. And this is hard, but I will share a quick story with everybody in the room. And it's a, for me, it's a political, not a political decision, it's a personal one, but I will, I will also recommend Andrew. And the reason for everybody in this room to understand is because when Andrew decided to run for mayor, he looked at me and he said, I'm running for mayor not to run against Josh, but to offer a different vision for the city. And the second thing he said to me was, I'm not going to be a puppet for you or for Jim or for anyone else up on that board. And I commend those words and I stand by those words and, uh, I think it's a shame I can only support one person.
Okay, John?
I nominate Vicki Rosenkrantz because I think she does do a lot for the city and I think she's always there. And, uh, I think people, she has a good rapport with the citizens to get things done. And it's my role as Vicki.
All right, so we would like to make the first motion. So the motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
Ice, sir. Nate?
No.
Brochus?
Yes.
Barnhart? Yes. Two, two?
Nate or Jim?
Make our motion to nominate Andrew Ramos.
Barnhart? No. Josh?
No.
Speak your questions. Savage?
Yes.
Ice, sir.
John? Wiggle advice.
I mean, real sure I pulled all the legalities today. I looked it up two weeks ago, but I pulled them again today to be sure. If there is not a majority vote, and a majority vote can't be two, one, one or two, two, it has to be under these circumstances, three to one or four to zero. Um, if there is not a majority vote, the president judge of the Court of Common Pleas of Northumberland County will fill the vacancy upon the petition of 10 qualified electors of the city or the petition of a majority of the remaining members of council. You have two options at this time, in my legal opinion. Either you can discuss if anyone's going to change their vote or after learning that, with the knowledge that this is going to go to the Court of Common Pleas and be taken out of your hands, if anybody wants to change their vote, they can do so now. However, if that is not going to happen and we're not going to have at least three people voting for one candidate, my suggestion to you is to save the time and effort of the electors of the city and tell me to prepare a petition for signature by the majority of council or all of council and the mayor, obviously, um, asking the president judge to make a decision because we are hopelessly dead.
Okay, I just, we need to make a motion for this later.
Um, you need to make a motion.
All right, so I will make the motion to have Joel file that paperwork. Do I have a second?
I'll second. I'd like to take a five minute recess.
Okay, we can do that first. We shall return.
I think we should, yeah, can we inform them why we're recessing? We should have more discussion.
You can't, you can't. It has to be a bummer.
All right. Jim, so.
I thought you were going to go.
So I guess discuss, I don't know what you're, whatever you want to.
Throw another option out there.
Throw another option out there then.
I'm making the motion, Kevin, true.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Any other options? Anyone else, any other options? Any more discussion wanted or needed?
I'm making the motion, you're from.
Is there a second for Jim Broombaugh?
I'm trying. Move the thing.
Any other discussion? Nate, John?
I want, I feel your motion.
All right, Nate, any other discussion or nominees? All right, so.
Joel, just, just for clarification, if this goes to the president judge, they can vote anybody they want. Anybody they darn well please, although the.
So you're opening it up, you four members are opening it up for anybody here. Not anybody that's been here, just so you understand.
But to be clear, the final part of the answer is that I would suggest to, once he makes this motion, I'm going to suggest to council also that part of the petition be the names and contact information of the people we've interviewed here tonight and ask for their consideration by the judge.
Which is only a consideration.
That's only a consideration. The judge can do whatever the judge wants.
Tonight has happened many times in Texas, especially at the county.
Don't make, don't make a decision for us. She will make the decision for us though.
How long is that process going to take?
It won't. I can't promise you, but I can tell you the petition will be done before the end of the week and I assume the judge will make a very quick decision. I can't, I mean, I can't promise you that, I'm not having.
I was just going to say that it's going to take months, like.
No, 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 no.
Why would you do that when it's a lead work?
It has to take under 30.
Okay.
By law, it has to be within 30 days, but we will try to get it done as humanly quickly as humanly possible for all of us.
All right, so any more discussion before the motion's carried through? All right, so once again, I'll make the motion for Joel to file that paperwork and have a consideration of the individuals who subput their letters of interest in. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
All right, sir. Savage?
Yes.
Brochus? Yes. Barnhart?
Yes.
All right, um, moving down, we do have an open office tonight for our newly appointed treasurer woman. So please, I can go there, you, you, I, I just know that maybe. All right, please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth and that I will discharge my duties of my office with due diligence. Thank you, congratulations. Uh, so, right now, I will make the motion of approval in six minutes from June 9th and 23 meetings, reports from the fire department, police department, treasurer, controller, code office, help department, Parks and Rec and planning commission. Do I have a second?
Ice, sir. Yes. Savage? Yes. Brochus?
Yes.
Yes. Barnhart?
All right, and now for our proclamation. Whereas disability pride month is celebrated nationally in the month of July, this month was chosen Honor of an Act American for Disabilities Act of 1990 and is important to take time this month to reflect on the disability rights, movements and progress that has been made. Disability is a natural part of life and with all aspects identified in ethnicity, education and economic background. This disabled individuals can continue to face discrimination for something out of their control and for being who they are, continue to be targeted with violence and harassment, continue to persist through the efforts of their disability in the community and support, and support of community agencies, businesses and individual routes. The city of Sunbury believes that is, uh, the city of Sunbury believes in the dignity of all individuals with disabilities, supporting equity and ensuring the acts of discrimination and hatred will not be tolerated. Disabled individuals contribute to our community's success and strength in the numbers of ways that are immeasurable. The disability community is diverse, including people of physical, emotional, visual, impaired and many other disabilities. Disability should never limit one's independence or social participation, but rather encourage and recognize and celebrate their parts of their identity. Recognizing the nature of disability and addressing the barriers will strengthen our society. The disability community invites the members of the city of Sunbury community to join during the month of July and celebrate their achievements in our community. Now, therefore, I, Josh Brochus, mayor of the city of Sunbury, on behalf of the city council, hereby proclaim July a disability pride month in the city of Sunbury. I encourage all people in our community to join and celebrate the diversity and inclusion in equity, encourage all people with our policies and practices towards these groups of individuals who are heroes. Present that to these individuals here tonight. Uh, moving on to old business here, uh, the dedication of an unnamed ally, uh, for Jim Broombaugh. I don't know if Joel wants to speak about this or if anyone has any questions about this.
Sure, I'm just saying quickly that Mr. Broombaugh has been here before. I intended to do this at last meeting and quite honestly, wasn't here because I was on vacation. Um, therefore, I'm asking the council to make a motion and approve the dedication of the unnamed ally that we had spoken about with Mr. Broombaugh to Mr. Broombaugh's property.
Questions, anyone? All right, so I'll make the motion for that dedication. Do I have a second?
Savage?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Barnhart? Yes. Ice, sir.
All right, uh, moving on, I know last meeting we talked about hailstone contracting to help redo our ordinance says if we did have the funding there from the commercial inspection. I just wondered, because I went down to Kathy and asked about, hey, do we have this $3,000? And she was unaware of any accounts that were out there allocated for this. So I didn't know if that money was found at some place or.
We, we do have an economic development to go that way. We, I am actually doing research, I just talked to both Cheryl and Kathy. I, it's going in the general funds, but it hasn't been put into a systemic fund for that as a way to.
So do we have, so is that money already allocated elsewhere or do we actually have $3,000 set aside to be spent on this?
Do, was it set aside prior?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of, no. But I'm still figuring all that out. But we do have it to go forward where it is.
Okay. So do we have, so do we have that this time to have? So we're, I mean, so is this in the general fund somewhere?
We actually have it in economic development if we choose, if you choose to take it out of that to take or I, Josh, I'm coming to a.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking you, I'm just saying, but for the economic development, that money has already been allocated and spent.
There, not all of it.
What, what part of it hasn't, because there's $15,000 already spent for the comprehensive plan, phase two. We spent $10,000 for the SRI, the SRI statute and we have, we allocated $3,000 for the four different police events. So we're already over the budget with $28,000.
Yeah, we did, the 22, so we're down to 19, but you, I forgot about the police. So we would be. Yeah, and we have not a settlement.
Yes, so, I mean, so obviously it's not economic development. So before we move forward with anything, do we find the money, make sure.
I, I started.
Yes, it's, it's not your fault, you were thrown into it, you were thrown into it. But before we start signing contracts.
I do know where it's at, I do know it's there. I have not found anything to show that has it now, you can go anywhere else. So once I locate it, the funds are available to you. They will be available to you.
Okay, so I, I mean.
I'll get a more specific point.
All right, so Joel, you think we should still hold off to sign that contract so we know the funds are officially there or what's your opinion?
I think, I think you can vote to sign the contract.
I mean, we already did.
Oh, you did.
We're contingent on like, hey, we know the money is there.
Yes, I think the contingent on knowing the money is that, well, I wouldn't sign the contract until you know the money's there.
Okay.
I was going to say you can vote on it and say you can sign it if you find out for sure the money's there.
Okay.
If you find out by the end of the week, then I think you can sign.
All right, that works. Okay. So you're saying is in the motion, transfer it out of general fund into this line, or once we find it, make the motion?
I'm saying, I need where the money is found.
Okay, so wait.
In the treasurer's office. That's not where it's going to pay from, it's going to be paid out of, out of, of savings.
Yeah, okay, so when we find it, then come back and do that.
To move that, to that budget line.
Okay. Do we have to find it first or tap?
I would say keep that for next year.
All right, council, any questions on anyone? All right, uh, moving on to new business, DCEP multimodal list fact.
Um, I'm going to give it over to Steve to talk a little bit about traffic. All right, so we look at several streets throughout the city. The problem is going up, so finding out amount of money to go forward, uh, with this, with this grant, um, so we couldn't do a full depth reconstruction like we've been doing, uh, on other projects with this grant, uh, on its own. So what we're going to do is we're going to try to get the best bank for it spot, we're going to come off of second, on 3D South Second Street and resurface it for all the ADAs and motor corners. It's long and short. So this will pick up at the end of, uh, the project that's going to be commencing here pretty directly down in front of the Wise's Warehouse that extends up to Veterans Memorial Bridge, this will extend from Veterans Memorial Bridge to Market Street.
And any questions for Steve?
Why does the city have to pay for that with UGI W it up?
We're not paying for anything down there. This is, this project is from Veterans Memorial Bridge to Market. They only work from Veterans Memorial Bridge going south.
Okay, so because they're going to pay that, right?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's all getting redone. Yep, that's, to put it separate, project already bid out and enterprise starts that here in two weeks.
What about Moore Second Street?
Harvey?
What about Moore Second Street, like from Market Street up to Reagan?
I, I have to.
That could just be, that could be the, uh, pothole city there, I guess, right? For another year or two.
Would you like to find me the money?
Well, no, but I.
I have 31 miles of highway to do in this city and I only have a small amount of money to do it, so I don't need to.
So you can only do half of the street?
We're not going to figure that part out here tonight, but then right now it's just on South Second. So, um, so I'll make the motion to, uh, go for the multimodal grant for the projects Steve described. Do I have a second?
Barnhart? Yes. Savage?
Yes.
Ice, sir. Brochus?
Yes. Uh, moving on, Councilman Barnhart.
Uh, I'm making the motion for code UTV on this bed, we're going to take the money from that and put it back to buy a, some of the vehicle, hopefully next year or year after.
Do you, do you have a minimum threshold that you want to put that on for bid? Do you have any thoughts?
Sixteen, sixteen.
Eighteen to hide.
Was eighteen to hide? And we bought it for around $23,000, double check.
But, I mean, we have to check on appreciation. I think I look up just general appreciation, you're looking between fifteen as well as in, in if you're actually looking.
So John, what do you want your minimum threshold to be?
Sixteen.
All right. So, so your motion is to place on this bid with a minimum of sixteen, correct?
Sixteen, yes.
To go back into your vehicle line item.
Right, for us.
All right, I will second.
A question. Vehicle, car and then buggy.
Uh, truck. Ice, sir.
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Barnhart? Yes.
All right, uh, moving on, we do have road closures coming up here, one September 13th for Arts and Curiosity Fest for Market Street between Fourth and Fifth, and October 12th for the Fireman's Memorial on Market Street, the east side, that's, that's the mall side between Second and Third. Do I have a second?
Barnhart? I abstain on the first one, yes on the second.
Do I need to break up the motion? Do I need to burst it up?
Even just abstain and hold it?
He just, yes, he abstained.
I just abstain. Brochus?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Ice, sir.
Uh, moving on, Councilman Ice, sir.
Women in the city of Sunbury are willing to gather $15.
No, sir, I second.
Barnhart? Yes. Savage?
Yes.
Ice, sir.
Brochus?
Yes. Keep going, Councilman Ice, sir.
I accept the resignation of John Wall, which was in that position. He did a heck of a job, even for personal reasons.
Second.
Excellent. Savage?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Barnhart? Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Ice, sir.
Sunbury Cheese, Joel, you got that table?
Well, we have table, but I can, for transparency sake, we can tell everybody what's going on. Basically, we had filed to pay for Sunbury Cheese under eminent domain. However, a bank had contacted us last year and stated that they were seeking to forward the property through a mortgage. They were going to sell it and were going to talk to us about how they were going to do that, whatever. I've been in contact, for that reason, we allowed the bank to move forward and we withdrew our eminent domain. I have been in contact with the bank several times over the last few months and the current owners have prolonged the taking of the property by the bank. And the current owners had prolonged the taking of the property by the bank by making some payments, et cetera. My understanding is that the bank, the last I spoke to them, the bank said they were still taking the property. They were in the process of doing so through the courts. I contacted them two weeks ago and have not yet, the guy said he was going on vacation and would contact me when he got back. He has not contacted me back yet. That's the information I can give you.
Oh, so Jim's got a motion?
Yes.
Ister, second.
Savage?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Ister?
Keep going, Councilman Ister.
E W building renovation, Ister is, you're assigned, Ister is assigned. State, we're, we have to give him one.
Yes.
Okay.
Second. Barnhart?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes.
Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Ister.
O B G, an open grant match. U C U G, you have fourteen thousand dollars. I already have ten for this year, but it's gonna be for next year or three.
Yeah, so by the time we would start the project, if we were awarded a grant, the engineering would take place for next year. So we would have to roll over ten thousand in the budget, four thousand for next year to meet the match requirement. We put it in there as far as applying, but they said that since we don't have a specific line item for it in the budget, that they need a letter from us. So we're to, you said, or our application?
Just one quick question. This is for the engineering, that what this grant will go for?
Yes.
Second.
Savage?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Josh, I think you have that. Yep, I got it here somewhere. I'll get it signed here. Alright, Councilman Savage?
So I will make a motion to approve a two thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollar tax payment for parcel zero five zero dash zero two dash zero zero five dash one six four and zero five zero dash zero three dash zero zero five dash one five nine. This apartment, the city is in the process of taking over. We don't want to go to tax sales as we can.
Moving on. So old, for everybody who has old... Second.
Ister?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Just, again, for the sake of transparency, and I hope for the subject of concern, the Turkey Hill Building. We did move to take that building by eminent domain because we have had no contact from the owner in several years. We attempted on various occasions to contact the owner and were unsuccessful in doing so. We have an address, we have a name, we have various, whatever, we were unsuccessful in contacting that person. Therefore, the Board of View was appointed by the court and the Board of View is using the property and is going to get back to us to tell us what we have to pay for the property in order to take it over. At that point, we will need to pay for the property. And it will then become the, although legally, it's really the property of the city now as soon as the eminent domain was granted. But we can't take it over until the Board of View says with X, we will make payment and then we will own it and do with the property as the city desires. But that's all in the process of happening as we speak.
Thank you, Joel. Keep going, Councilman Savage.
So the next, the next few motions are technical changes for the treasurer's office. There's a meeting that takes place a few months ago. We had appointed Mr. Back, we had represented it to the county and the school district. And each one of the three taxing bodies has to come up with agreements. So the city's gonna formalize, I'll make a motion that we make a salary adjustment for Lisa Martina. It's fifty-one thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. This will be the county and school portions of the salary as of six thirty, two thousand twenty-five, when she assumed the office.
Quick question, Nate. Is that just to fill the remainder of the term, or is that for the next four years also?
So this is, so this would be for the, for Lisa to go away, the treasurer was currently making and then she'll be subject to whatever other raises were agreed upon with the bodies.
So, so my question is, I get, so what we're voting on here, is this like what she was appointed to last meeting? See the rest of the term through? And then we go back and negotiate again the next four year of the elected position term? Yeah, so this is only for until now, until the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay.
So this would be based on what the last term negotiations filled it?
Okay, now, I ask a stupid question. There's nothing against Lisa. But any other position in the city of Somerage elsewhere, you don't start off with someone else left has?
She's elected. Since it's an elected position, it's...
Okay, okay, that's fine. Just have that question. Okay.
So I'll make that motion to approve the salary adjustments.
Second.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Ister?
Savage?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes.
So based on the negotiations, there was a recommended two percent wage increase for the City of Somerage Treasurer's Office effective one-one, two thousand twenty-six. And I'll make that as a form of...
And that will be for the next four years?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Oh, someone's seconded? Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
Roche's?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Ister?
I will also make a motion that we formalize the position adjustment for Kathy Geiger and... Can I combine the motions? Well, I get, we'll do the checks first. So I make the motion to adjust Kathy Geiger's position. She took over, took over for Penny and she's fulfilling her old duties.
With the salary of?
So, yeah.
I thought, I thought you were putting it in one arm, so... Alright.
So, so we're gonna just go on, and this will be into, we're not addressing salary. She was approving her to go to the position now.
Roche's?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes. I'll make a motion that we have the salary adjustment for Kathy Geiger. And this is just the county and school portion for thirty-five thousand, six forty-two seventy-three. And this will be effective as of the date of five-five twenty-five.
And is that going just to the end of the year, or is that for the next four years?
To the end of the year, and then...
We will come back as a council to renegotiate those, right?
Well, I'm sorry, no, we'll be setting her salary at what it will be currently at, and she'll be subject to the two percent for the next four years.
But see, my issue is, as a taxing body in whole, as the City of Somerage, Chicano, M E School District and the county, what we pay to collect taxes on top of our salaries is outright ridiculous. I mean, if you look at Shamokin, you look at Lock Haven, you look at Williamsburg, we're sometimes double, not triple, what we're paying our people in tax collection. Like, I mean, I have the numbers here for Shamokin, for example, like what they pay their treasurer, Lock Haven, Williamsburg.
Lisa has already been addressing that. She's on her rights.
Well, I'm not saying not where. I'm saying if we vote this tonight, this is locked in for the next four years. So we're paying for tax collection, things like that.
Their earnings salaries would be, but if we restructure the department during budget season, then that...
Well, that's what I'm saying. So this is only until the end of the year. So when it comes back to tax collection for, between us, the county and the school district, we can renegotiate, or what we vote here tonight is impacted for the next four years?
So their salaries, as we set them tonight, if they all continue up for their positions, their salaries, if we set them tonight, plus the...
Yeah, for the next four years.
But if at the end of the year, probably during budget season, they start to restructure the department and major, and classify all of their positions, then it comes back to negotiation.
Okay, well, I mean, like I said, we're throwing a big what-if out there. But like I said, if we vote tonight, if we don't change nothing, that's locked in for the next four years. I mean, I don't think we should be locking that in for the next four years, because in my opinion, we're highly overpaying compared to what, like, we have a higher, almost similar salaries as Williamsburg and they're five times the size of us. Lock Haven and Shamokin are doing it for far less than what we're paying our salary pay. I'm not saying, I'm not trying to cut jobs for less salaries, but I think to lock something in for the next four years...
Well, I think if you look up there at Kathy Geiger, she's somebody who's been here before, how many years?
I'm not, I'm not disputing that. I'm saying on top of our normal city salary at this, I'm just saying what other municipalities are doing, we are paying double, if not triple, what other municipalities are doing. And it's either they're really effective and we're not, or we just have that much more work. I don't know which one it is, but like I said, if you can make the motion, that's fine. But I'm just saying, I think this should be revisited before we make a salary decision for the next four years. That's why I'm... No, I, I, no, I totally get that. But I'm saying we're setting them now without even doing our budget for this year. Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, there's, there's salaries that we pay and then there's tax collection stuff, correct? Because I have it right here, what has been sent over from, for, you know, twenty twenty-five. And it says broken up, each government body will pay a third, a third, a third. So the salaries are equally divided, but like I said, that's cutting out what we pay additionally as our city salaries. So like, what's, what's voted here tonight is in addition to our normal city salary.
And just so everybody's clear, thirty-five thousand is split between each entity, each tax department, each county. So I just want everybody to be clear, that's not, each entity pays thirty-five thousand dollars. It's a little confusing, I know, considering this, but that is split up evenly between the three tax bodies to pay that portion just for tax collection purposes.
Yes. So Joel, there's a question.
What's your one?
Barnhart.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Roche's.
No.
Savage.
Yes. Um, then another technical point there is I'll make a motion for a payment of twenty thousand dollars each annually by the Montgomery County and the Chicano School District for shared expenses of the Tax Collection Office effective one one two thousand twenty six through twelve thirty one two thousand twenty nine.
We'll just quick request if possible. Can we actually put it in a line item that states that it's actually for the insurance and not office supplies for the treasurer department? Because if you look through our budget, it doesn't say this twenty thousand dollars is for insurance reimbursement. It just says for office supplies, which is very, my opinion deceitful, but that's my opinion.
Technically in there, it's for everything that involves tax collection.
But talking with the school district and the county, it was for, correct me if I'm wrong, because you went up at the twenty five thousand, it was for their insurance contribution that we pay for the employees. So is it for anything at all? Is it for the insurance? Because from their understanding, it's supposed to be going towards their insurance contribution.
That's not their understanding.
That's not true?
That's not their understanding.
Oh, I mean, I must have had a different conversation because that was their understanding that was pulled. Then maybe they just misunderstood that the twenty thousand, that wasn't the one that go up to twenty five thousand was for their insurance contribution that we pay our employees.
All the costs affected that number, the computers, the paper, whatever, whatever is insurance is, that affects that number.
And that's in third, how do you say it, third tax question?
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disputing that. I'm just saying. Speci- yeah, specify what it's going towards, not just, hey, here's forty thousand dollars, you can, you can play with it how you want in the, so that's just my, that's just my opinion. You can take it for a ring assault.
They want to save us for insurance and make them out of state.
Why, it adds up to.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, to the payment of twenty thousand dollars each annually um with the stipulation that it goes towards tax collecting expenses, including insurance, workers' comp, salary, any expenses that are on for a specific track. For, 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 for taxes, yes, tax collecting.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Roche's.
Thank you for doing that.
Savage.
Yes.
Ister.
All right, keep going, Councilman Savage.
I'm sorry. I'll make a motion for the approval of abstracts and documents for the general fund in the amount of one hundred thirty thousand six hundred nineteen dollars thirty nine cents. Liquid fuels in the amount of four thousand eight hundred sixty seven dollars twenty five cents and payroll in the amount of eighty six thousand three hundred twenty one dollars and twenty cents.
Savage.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Ister.
Roche's. Yes. Uh, moving on here to discussion items, I know this is always a hot topic, you always have issues with it, but city credit cards. I know sometimes we do have issues on not the money being spent, but forms getting filled out, being used properly. The one thing I am asking for new council, I mean, excuse me treasurer, Lisa Martina, if, is this a suggestion that each department have their own designated credit card? Because at times it's very embarrassing when we only have a thousand dollar limit on the city combined and you go to buy something and your card getting declined.
If each card has a specific number for each specific department, correct?
Yes, sir, no, I'm not sure. What I'm asking for, if we'll say there's one for the police department, that's has its own limit that we can track. We'll say there's one for code.
Do you ask the city one on each card?
Yeah, because, because for example, I know it's a thousand dollar limit. So we'll say the code office buys something and Steve buys something and we go to buy something and we don't know about it, the card is getting declined and we don't know why. And it's embarrassing, you're at the store and your city credit card is getting declined and no one knows why. And oh, we gotta call the bank and get the limit up. So.
I know, now, I like each department to have their own credit card in their department. You know, we don't set it going to the court to get it, we have our own, we don't have to go track.
I mean, I do agree with Councilman Barnhart on that one because we put supervisors in positions to do things. They should be allowed to manage your credit card. But then it goes back to, once again, if they don't fill a paperwork out, then obviously I think it's the right, the treasurer department, hey, you can't fill paperwork out right? Sorry, you need your credit card. That's just my, I can't.
She wants a specific card to have a specific number.
Correct. That's just my suggestion. If council says no way, that's fine, but that's just, that's just a suggestion. I mean, it's whatever council think is fair. I mean, I'm up for whatever, but I think.
I think that's a neutral layout version that's ordered, you don't want that.
Yeah. I mean, what does council think of?
I, I think five hundred dollars and if you need more now, you should come to your council for.
I would say council, I would say to your council person.
I think everyone should go on to your council person, they should.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's a certain.
Have you looked over the, the credit card purchases?
Yeah, I mean.
We might think so.
These are good, support local businesses.
Before we set any specific ones, though, we probably gonna wanna review, reveal, once you reveal.
Yeah, and that's fine.
Who does what and how much?
Yeah.
Your off-revenue is how you actually do this, how the habit is involved.
Oh, yeah.
So we probably should review what is for each card and then settle them appropriately if we can actually divide them up depending on how, how, how they work.
That works. You can figure it out. Any, any questions on that? Anyone? Hey, we're good? All right, moving on, uh, the session ended change order last time, council mentioned you said you were gonna have a meeting after the last council meeting, discuss what was going on there, who was paying for what, so I don't, let that meeting go.
Marked a meeting at one o'clock.
So nothing was discussed at the, the previous meetings? I mean, at the other meeting, as you said after the last council meeting, hey, we're gonna meet on Thursday, discuss what was going on there, Suawat property and stuff like that?
I have talked to Mr. Suawat twice since then, but I've spoken to him today and also I think we're missing his, uh, his.
Okay, so there was, there was no determination who was paying for what, correct?
Right, so that's meeting. We told the, we, the city don't pay nothing.
I just wanna make sure, verify, like, who, if we're not going to pay anything, I wanna say we're not paying anything, it's, it's, we can figure it out on the road or? All right. Questions on anyone? All right, and then just moving on to the last one here for the twenty twenty six budget preparation. I figured the next work session, the first one in August, would be a good time to start talking about budget for twenty twenty six. That way, once again, it's ready to go, not rushing, having special meetings, get done. Does that work for everybody? I can get Jeff to send out the, the, the budget that we always, you know, everyone does in, get them over to the treasurer's office, that way they can do the overall budget, so everyone has an idea, not, so we can be like, all right, hey, we're this much over or we're not over or, hey, give a balanced budget. Well, I mean, why don't you get the spreadsheet?
I'll have everything else I want.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Any questions on that for the budget for twenty twenty six? All right, uh, moving on to announcements. Uh, the clerk's office will be closed Tuesday and Thursday for, uh, community service hours because they'll be helping the United Way move some other things. Uh, SRI Blueview on the River will be July thirty first, six P M. at the Ample Theater. Uh, next city council meeting will be July twenty eighth at six fifteen. Church Hymn City on August third at six thirty at Cameron Park. National Mountain on August fifth from five to eight at the James R. Ister Youth and Community Center. Rose City U Resources, uh, block party on August ninth at Cameron Park from twelve to four. Back to school night at the Goodwood Playground, August ninth from seven to ten. Uh, River Fest, August fifteenth to sixteenth at Myrtle Phillips Park. Are there any other announcements by? Yes, sir. You mean? I mean, myself, the chief, Rob has been helping, Renee at the front office. Yep, I'll get you that list. You're welcome. Councilman Barnhart, announcement, sir.
August ninth, we're gonna be accepting tires, four dollars, try to, there's a lot of tires around town, so if anybody would like to come up here.
Vehicle tires are four dollars.
See it?
Truck tires are twelve.
All right, where, where will that be at?
Yeah, at the, uh.
So move four cars on? Okay, and for what hours?
From eight until one o'clock on, on the August ninth.
All right, uh, get something like, make it a flyer that we can put on the Facebook page, that's, you don't want to share it out. All right, come on. Any other announcements by anyone? All right, at this time, is there any public comment at this time? I'm gonna start here for front working way back. Please state your name, ma'am.
Um, Tracy, I need to tell Mr. Walker again, but, um, did your alley list buy the old Coca-Cola plant? You said last year we were on the list to get that fixed and it's next year and it still hasn't been fixed.
Yeah, we, we put Millings down on it. We put Millings down, down on the alley probably three times a year.
Well, right, uh, no. It's like first and, and out, I mean, there's potholes, there's a pothole right behind my house, it's constantly filled with water. And then, yeah, I mean, take a look at it, there's a bunch of potholes. And I don't mean to complain, but I mean, the streets in this town, state, every street in this town, like, Second Street is a washboard from one end to the other.
It's what I was given and spent six, seven years trying to get it right.
So do you guys care, add for a contractor for that or does the street?
I think.
Does the somebody, you, you do that? Work or do you hire out?
No, we, we put everything out to bid. Now, we're gonna be starting our liquid fuels painting this year, we'll be starting that probably about three weeks, but we, we just had our, I have Packer Street put out, Packer Street construction will start probably a month and a half, two months till we get things going, get that going.
So here on our next question, why do you always start it like the school starts?
We don't.
I mean, this July.
The school day is gonna be done prior to, prior to the school's starting. The Packer Street job's getting to work for two years, it's gonna take two years to build Packer Street. Suspan Anna, Adam is the second part of that, it's gonna take two years to build it.
Well, for Packer Street, it's really gonna go to, you know, anything, you know, stuff that's coming in and out of there.
We're re, we're redoing the roadway completely, so it's.
See, you have to understand, is that roadway was never a roadway up until sixties, it was a road. Yeah, I mean, yeah, we, we have a substantial amount of money, a substantial amount of grants that could apply for a guy that are on a schedule and all kind of, but they have to take place in a certain manner. Uh, and we also have to understand, and understand that all these cities on the East Coast, they were built hundreds of years ago and they had a pipe to be ground, that's terrible. So we can either just overlay over the roadway and make it look better for a little bit and then municipal party comes out and cuts it all up and makes big holes and everything else and then it falls apart, okay? So we're trying to do it right, we're trying to do it full depth reconstruction, that's what we're doing on Packer Street, that's what we did on Suspan Anna, that's what we did on Reagan, that's what we did on Chestnut. So we're trying to do on that strategy, there will be times where we'll walk the stretch, we'll say, okay, we're just gonna do a resurface. That's what South Second is, resurface. So there'll be no pipe work done with that really. Municipal party will do their pipe work ahead, ahead of time with the limited amount they can personally do themselves, will take, take place this year and next year, and then point seven, we'll go do that work. But that's how we have to plan, we're planning out ten years out, we're, we're building all this up, I mean, we have millions of dollars set up and the structure will be, we'll be shocked what happens here in the next few weeks.
And, and just for a point of reference for everybody, just what we're dealing with as far as prices for everything, it's about a million dollars a block. Um, to, for redoing the roadway how we need to with all the infrastructure.
And we get about two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year from the state to help. And we have five thousand dollars in the budget from the city for all drugs.
Five thousand dollars?
Five thousand dollars, that's what I have. So just so you understand what I'm dealing with here, okay? I don't, it's a hard job, so I'm doing the best I can. We have to go out and beg for all the grants and we, our politicians have been working with it terrifically, we've been doing a great job with it. Derek's been kicking it, Jim's been doing, I mean, everybody's been doing great, Lisa is great, she was in with us. We're getting, uh, there's a lot of work, we're getting a lot more grants than a lot, anybody else around here and, and it's coming.
Public comment, please state your name, ma'am.
Beverly Mercer. My question is, we just talked about increases in salaries, but we don't have enough money to cover our roads. And yet it's all past their salaries. So I don't understand.
I mean, I, I'll address it, so, yeah, I mean, but the thing is, is that my argument was, which I stand by, right, was a technical one, we, we have people that are at rates right now that are, uh, due for their, their percentage raises, their cost of living and adjustments of two percent, which was set by the three taxing bodies years ago. The, but to, to address your concern, I agree with you and we're, we have budget season coming up, but you know, the other thing is, is we have an antiquated tax system, state and federal wide, and we also have, uh, a historic number of electric vehicles on the road, our liquid fuels funds are dropping. We, there's gonna be other, uh, taxing measures that are being looked at at the state, which we can advocate for as we have been with our lawmakers to get different fees and services in. Uh, there are other avenues to go after money that I've been looking into, there are some things that we can add, like a local impact fee or something, so yeah, we need more money in the roads or streets.
We're just talking in circles.
No, no, I'm giving you a direct answer.
Yeah, I'm not saying you're not giving me correct answers, it's still going in circles. And I still pay my taxes, everybody here pays taxes, but our roads fall to the wayside of salaries. And I think you just stated, or somebody stated, that salaries can actually be lowered. So why don't we put our roads ahead of salaries?
No, no, we're not gonna debate back and forth. I'd be happy to say that. But, well, I guess, and maybe this is a better, it's a more direct one, I've talked with the mayor directly, I've talked with the new treasurer directly about actually restructuring the department that I oversee because I think that we don't need as many people in there as we have. So I do wanna not only cut some salaries, I don't wanna cut salaries, I wanna cut position, either in part time or full time, to save on the benefits, the retirement, to save on the, the outward salary so that we can have some extra money to do things, especially now too, as many people in this room know, the school district overhaul the, the way the taxes are done. So now that our taxes come directly out of our paycheck, we have less flexions going on here, which is why in merit, I did agree with the mayor's argument, I just disagreed on that one salary, but other than that, I, I agree with both of you, I think we do need to look at the structure and other things.
This is a simple, simple thought, you know, that seems simple to me, that we take money out of somewhere else, push towards the people of the city.
I would just remind you that the people in the city that work for this city are the biggest asset.
I'm not saying there is a dollar in there, a dollar. It's very honest with you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please state your name, ma'am, like, I'll get to everybody here.
Um, Mary Ann Miller, on the, uh, five thirty six Art Street, the corner of Sixth and Orange. There's a property across the street, right, right by the Beth Elementary School. I know the city had taken care of the backs you're doing for, but the grass is as high as the fence now, people cannot walk on the sidewalks, they're walking on the roads. I was just concerned because of the schools starting and the lessons and the kids there, so thank you.
We have somebody's been.
Okay. I'm not so afraid, Stacey, that's my.
Definitely afraid, Stacey.
Thank you. Please state your name, sir.
Alan Love, parking situation on, uh, Little One Avenue behind Dollar General. The other day, I came in, I wanted to go into the private parking lot and the big tractor trailer with a fifty three foot trailer blocking the entrance.
Was that that one, is that the Dollar General one that they're unloading to restock the store, is that the one you're referring to or is this some random tractor trailer?
Well, there's no reason they can't park and leave that access open. They might have to walk one or two more steps, but we pay a fee to park there and we have unlimited access. Now, you're denying us access by them doing that. So I think they should be made to avoid parking across the outlet, uh, access way. And maybe a better idea would be, since Little One Avenue is about two lanes wide, why don't they park on a Burger King side of the street and unload and then you wouldn't have any problems?
As truck driver Alan, I'll tell you that, for the inconvenience it is for you for a half an hour or whatever, it, it saves the truck driver a, a lot of heartache, trust me. It's only a short inconvenience, it's common to there hours or days.
Well, you pull under the A that, then you gotta drop your truck around to the corner in the right direction.
What we can do, we can talk to Dollar General about it, maybe just this one time because like I said, they were restocking the entire store and it was probably longer than normal to unload, but we could, we could have, have a talk with Dollar General, let's try to have their drivers be mindful of, hey, you come in, if you could, not block that because people have to get in and out of that block, does that work?
It won't.
I'm not gonna make any promises that they're gonna listen, but, because we can have the conversation to encourage it because, I say, maybe didn't this, didn't this be because they have been restocking this whole store fully compared, like, you know, one load in and out, that there's no more merchandise? All right. Public comment? Please state your name, sir.
Uh, Phil Staley on Third Street. It's kind of pet peeve of mine and I've, I've been in about it. I like to walk down here in the park, I ride by everywhere in town. Unfortunately, you got a guy out there, he's a vagrant to the hundredth degree. He's been wearing the same clothes for the last two years. He, he, he reeks. He sits on these benches. I saw him, I did see him defecate, but he was sitting on top of where he went down through the slats in the bench. I seen him urinate. I went to the office of aging and tried to get him help, but nothing. I, I saw Brad slap and he said he was gonna talk to you about it, see if we could do anything, I don't know if we ever did.
He, he did come speak to me, I know, I talked about it with the chief, we're trying to do what we can the legal way so that is prevented and not happening in our parks, but like I said, we have to make sure we do it the legal way.
The sad part about it, you know that when he's laying there on those benches and he's just not wanting, wherever he wants to do it, he's letting that on there. And you have other people sitting there. Come out here for lunch, just from Dollar, come to sub shop, wherever, something's gotta be done about it.
Yeah, like I said, the matter isn't going unaddressed, we've to make, like I said, we talked, uh, Slack, they come to me and talk with the chief about it, like I said, we just have to go about the legal way to try to get the individual help.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Delaina Regal. I've lived in this area my entire life and over the years I have heard about multiple infant deaths. I myself am a mother of two and I understand how difficult it can be to care for an infant when you have no experience and no support. Babies are amazing and beautiful, but way more work than you can ever imagine a first time mom. You can never be fully prepared for an baby. So what happens when it comes and you don't have a mean provider for it or you don't have the village to support you and guide you? My hope is to educate moms about the safe haven mall and bring a safe haven baby box to our area. The closest one we have is almost two hours away. The Safe Haven Baby Box is a registered five oh one state legal charitable organization with a mandate of safe babies from illegal abandonment and provide a fully anonymous option for surrendering in accordance with each individual state statutes. The Safe Haven Baby Box is a state of the art device that legally permits a mother in crisis to safely, securely, anonymously surrender their newborn. The Safe Haven Mall also allows parents to legally relinquish their newborns in designated safety spaces. The Baby Box is a temperature controlled safety device that falls under the state statutes of the Safe Haven Mall. The box is installed on the exterior wall of a firehouse or a hospital. The parents open the door to Baby Box, which triggers a silent, silent alarm to a nine on one dispatcher. The infant is placed inside a medical basin and a sensor located inside the box triggers a second alarm. The exterior door automatically locks when the baby is placed in the box. The staff responsible for the box is trained on the device operation. An interior door allows a medical staff member to secure the newborn from inside the designated building. The infant will quickly be taken to the hospital for medical evaluation. Some costs to be expected with this is anywhere between sixteen thousand to sixteen thousand five hundred. This includes the examination of the location, installation services, inspection, training of all emergency personnel via online certification modules. Some extra fees is anywhere between five thousand to seven thousand dollars. This includes a delivery fee, which is, they estimate the R to be around seven hundred dollars. Installation and labor, this is included in the five thousand to seven thousand, but if there is donation to the materials and the labor, it can cut a lot of costs. The electrical and the alarm hookup, there is a yearly fee, it is negotiable, uh, I think anywhere between two hundred to six hundred dollars, they estimate the R to be around two hundred dollars. And this covers restoration of Baby Box, maintenance, unlimited repairs and replacement of parts as a result of malfunction and not due to negligence or vandalism. Annual review training for all emergency personnel and more. So I'm looking for your support, consideration to help save innocent lives and to give mothers a safe, secure and anonymous option. And I do have handouts if you guys would like to break down with the costs and stuff.
Yeah, could you get me in at the end, please?
Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment? Please state your name.
Shawnee Leesabow. Way back here. Great. Sure, come to those, her eyes, all of you that I'm here this evening to. Name Shawnee Leesabow, I have a huge job for Miss Almar. But very currently has ski parks, water parks, children's parks and many other amenities for all of its citizens. What we don't have is the parks where our favorite family members, uh, some very missing votes. Since opening my business six years ago, there's been one consistent and recurring need pressed to me both by my clients and the general community, the people's desire to have an awfully strong park within the city limits. Many of you know, a little before a year ago, my husband passed away. Besides from the obvious reasons, it's been a really difficult time for me, both personally and professionally. Not only that, it's my husband, but also my business partner, my nervous employer and my real. Relearning how to run my business and function within the community has become my biggest challenge. I have concluded that relocating was my best option, my best option for the month. During my final planning stages to relocate, I came to the realization that the support, care and concern given to me by my clients and the community gave me the strength I needed to survive the previous year. I realized I could not leave and abandon those who supported me so strongly. So I decided to use my knowledge to give back and provide the one thing that they have been longing for for so long, their love. During the second year of a business, my shop actually hosted a picnic for my clients and we needed to travel to Seale Grove to find the park for our year. Shmoke and Now, Seale Grove, Northumberland, all have successful baby doll parks within our town. I believe with proper guidance and education, some areas will be the same. So I am here tonight humbly and respectfully requesting permission to continue this adventure to bring this much needed aspect to Sundari. I'm also seeking assistance by the council, specifically you, Mr. Ister, and helping to make the park very hard for reality. But I would like to present a proposal for the park, and I'll say it's very early stages and certainly lacking in some areas, however, what's not lacking is the community's desire for this park. The project has snowballed quite quickly since it has been brought to light and the com- my committee has been working hard to make plans to progress. So I'm asking, Mr. Ister, if you can find time to schedule, you and I can discuss the park more in depth, see what's needed and what's required, and to be an after puzzle.
Thanks, Shawnee. We'll do this, I'll get more, I spoke to you earlier and, uh, I'm, 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 I'm studying this. And what we'll do is, uh, for location and find, uh, some numbers to put your budget and so forth, and we'll work on it, it's gonna take a while.
All of our funding, we've already raised almost ten thousand for the park, we have a lot more coming in once we give the official okay from the council.
So, uh, you can just be four, I'll stop by the office and invite Shawnee and, uh, we'll, 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 sound good?
Sound good. We need files, I need a great, for the official okay and everything before, you know, a trial for the five hundred.
You let me know.
Okay, I, yeah. Oh, gotcha. So anybody need a month's pregnant?
Jim, give me a case.
Got it.
Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment? All right, I turn this meeting.